Call the Grove Town City Council work session to order July the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty five. We'll move right to item number six, financial statement to be provided by our finance director and assistant city administrator Bradley Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and council, in front of you tonight, you'll see our June thirtieth financial highlights. As you all are aware, this is not audited numbers or the final numbers for our fiscal year. However, this is going to be very close and representative of where we're going to end our fiscal year at. One of the things I do want to bring your attention to, you'll see the ideal remaining percentage, of course, is zero because we're at the end of the year. However, the remaining percentage in the general fund is now sitting at four. The financial statements you see in front of you are going to assume that you would be adopting the budget amendments that will be presented tonight under the new business. So you'll see that with the budget amendments included, of course, the fiscal year is going to look good on paper. However, as we've been working up, we're all aware that a lot of the expenses we incurred this year that were unbudgeted was related to Hurricane Helene and the depot construction. Again, we didn't know where we were going to be in the depot construction before the budget began last year. So that, of course, made it look like we've lost some money. However, those funds had already been collected and were ready to be allocated as such. But just for the paperwork, that's part of our major portion for the budget amendments. Everyone else, water and sewer and storm water is going to be the exact same as we originally budgeted. Water and sewer is close to that hundred percent, right at one percent remaining, but we don't, I don't see any large items pushing that over. It's actually closer to one point four. Of course, it just rounds down to one percent. So we should be looking good there. And then, of course, our restricted funds continue to build up some monies. The TSPLOS funds will be expended here shortly. We got some great news today. The Harlem Grove Town repaving project is actually going to start tonight instead of next week, so they were able to move it up a week. So they're going to start the milling process tonight around ten P M. And this entire re-overlay project will be a nighttime project, so after tonight at ten P M, it will be starting generally around eight P M. and going until six A M. So as to interfere with traffic, the least amount possible. So they will start with the milling process, getting up some of the road that's already existing there, and then they'll come back and do the overlay of the entire area. And this project, don't forget, it starts at the intersection of Robinson Avenue and Harlem Grove Town Road and Wrightsboro Road. And it goes out Harlem Grove Town Road all the way to the city limits, where, of course, the county will then pick up and take it all the way to the Harlem city limits. But that is a county project, not related to ours. So, but barring that, any questions related to the financial statements as I've presented?
Yes, just one quick question, Mr. Smith. Do you have an idea of the length of time for the Harlem Grove Town Road project? Has that been estimated or guesstimated?
I'm sure at some point I had that conversation, but I... I hope not. They're starting the repaving now for us.
I would think seven to ten days.
For the Harlem Grove Town Road repaving? No, sir, I'm sorry. If it takes three years for us to repave that road, we've done something terribly wrong. I will look into that. I'll get you a better answer, but I assume it's probably ten to twelve weeks.
Please don't say it takes three years, because that means we got real...
Me and Brandon Cooper are going to have a phone call here shortly after this meeting, if that's the case.
And if it's true, we got some serious problems that...
No, that means the millings would be just sitting on the side of the road. No, we're looking for ours. Again, Reeves Construction will be on site tonight at ten o'clock, so I don't, I can't imagine it would be any more than ten to twelve weeks. So, but I'll get, I'll get you an answer tomorrow.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Move to item twelve, report from the ad hoc committee. Stormwater rates, Councilwoman Soretta Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone here, those watching on Facebook. The mayor appointed me as the chair of this particular committee. The committee consists of myself, Director Keith Lyons, Director Bradley Smith, and Ms. Roxanne Brown. We met and discussed several different options, and we concluded that before we could make a definitive recommendation that we needed to research the imperia, the square foot imperious surface option. And I want to give a special thanks to Mr. Mike Woods and to Director Lyons. They reached out to HOPE, LARISI, with I S E. to look at the potential cost to implement this pure charge per square foot of imperious surface. And it was going to potentially cost the city around one hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year. So after we got that information back, the committee's recommendation is that we maintain our current building structure, and we look at a potential increase of one dollar per E R U, equivalent residential unit. That will begin on January first of each year for the next three years, ending with a charge per E R U of seven ninety-five as of January first, two thousand and twenty-eight. We also like to ask you, Mr. Mayor, if you would extend our committee and allow us to reconvene to study some water, wastewater rates, and the water waste treatment plant fee as well.
Sure.
That's our report. Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
All right. Item fifteen, new business. Fifteen A, recommend adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash zero five dash zero one B to adopt twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five amended annual balance budget first reading.
Yes, sir. If you'll see in front of you for tonight, this will be our first reading of the budget adjustments for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget. You'll note, this is much larger than our, our common budget adjustments for the end of the fiscal year. We are going to be increasing our expenses by roughly three million, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The two major components of that are the depot project itself, as well as the Hurricane Helene. Those two projects alone account for three million dollars, three million dollars and three million, twenty-five thousand dollars. Then we have the garbage disposal service with the increase that we received on January first caused us to exceed it by about fifty thousand dollars. Still, we're able to cover that with the fees we charge our citizens, so there is no difference there. It's just a matter of, we had to go up with that. And then we had some various expense lines, primarily utilities accounted for that. Again, with the Georgia Power, the increase that they had this year that took into effect for us this year. Revenues to offset it, we had some salary savings, as well as some professional services savings. And then we had some revenues that were able to offset that, including the list that I have here, which would be local option sales tax. We collected more in insurance premiums this year, L M I G, interest, fines, forfeitures, and building permits. The remainder of that, and the large portion that's going to make up the shortfall for this year, is prior year fund balance. Remember, all of the costs related to the construction of the depot were funded with prior year fund balance back when we received those A R P funds. So we won't exceed the amount that was approved out of the A R P funds, but that's where a lot of that will be coming from. And of course, that would only offset two million, twenty-five thousand. So then you've got another hundred, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars that would actually be going towards Hurricane Helene from prior year fund balance, which we're anticipating collecting a little over a million dollars back from FEMA once we actually commit, complete those submissions and get approved and get our funds cut back to us. Hopefully, in the October, November timeframe is when we're expecting to receive those funds.
Okay. Any questions?
No, sir.
Fifteen B, recommend adoption of twenty twenty-five millage rate, six point nine four eight mils.
Yes, sir, just as simple as that. We have not held any public hearings because we are rolling back the millage rate. We are doing our best to help our citizens by keeping our tax rate low. And it's something that mayor and council challenged us to do during the budget process to make sure that we did roll back our millage rate whenever possible. So this year, we are asking the council to approve the estimated rollback related, millage rate of six point nine four eight mils. And that's from our current millage rate of seven point three one three mils, which would do our best to keep our millage rate low year over year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for sharpening your pencil and making that work.
Yes, sir.
Okay, our agenda was fairly short tonight. We cannot start the council meeting until six thirty. So at this time, we will adjourn and reconvene exactly six thirty.
Call the City Council meeting for the city of Grove Town to order July the 14th, 2025. As you notice, we have two missing council members today, vacation. Based upon the charter, three people can sit on and have a quorum, so we do have a quorum tonight, and you will see me voting. So with this time, if I would ask that you stand for the invocation to be given by Councilman Bowman, and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together as a community, to try to work towards maintaining this community, both physically and also emotionally, as a community of friends and family and neighbors. We ask you to give us the wisdom for this diocese to listen, to hear, and to make the kind of decisions that will carry out that mission. We thank you for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us prior to this day and on this day, and we already want to thank you for the blessings that you have stored up for us in the future. Keep us available to love our neighbors and our friends, to love each other, and to follow in the steps of your son. We ask all this in your precious name. Amen.
A pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may all be seated. Thank you. All right, item number three, entertain the motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, cast your vote at this time. Motion carries. Item four, approval of the June 9th, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the June 9th, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, cast your votes at this time. Motion carries. Item five, committee reports, public safety. If you'd like to have any of that information, it'll be on our activity reports that submitted, and possibly by the police department if they speak here today, because Councilman Blair is out. Utility billing will also be probably provided by our city administrator. Utility services, Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. This report reflects July, June, I'm sorry, June 2025. The water department, they did 167 locates, 118 trash can orders, 517 other service orders, 23 histories, 20 replaced meters, seven leaks, 15 new meters were installed. Our stormwater department, they cut the grass at 10 retention pools and easements and assisted with cutting the fields. They assisted other departments on five occasions with various water leaks and meter reads. They cleaned the ditch on Railroad Avenue and Pine Tree Street. They cleaned up the Third Avenue water tank, repaired a storm box on Lori Lane, attended a chainsaw safety training, cleaned out a manhole on Durbin Street. Waste water department, they cleaned one sewer line, assisted other departments eight times with carrying leak issue, water leak issues and meter reads. They spent 52 hours cutting grass with the water waste treatment, plant fields, water office, and lift stations. They performed locates for water and sewer lines, cleaned around storm drain boxes, attended a chainsaw safety training, flagged for an asphalt repair. The water, wastewater treatment plant discharged 32.795 million gallons of treated wastewater to Butler Creek. They sent four dumpsters off to waste management, used 31.2% of the plant's capacity, began draining basin three for cleaning and maintenance, and equipment availability is 75% due to basings being offline for maintenance. Just want to shout them out, thank them so much. There was a water line or a water main break in our neighborhood over the weekend, and they were out there well after business hours working to repair that line, and so just want to give Director Lyons and his team a shout out, and thank them for going above and beyond to make sure that our city waste and water is working properly. That's all I have, unless there's any other questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Item C, planning and development, Councilman Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For the month of June, as it relates to the development side of the House, planning and development performed 258 building inspections. They handled 33 certificates of occupancy, issued three new business licenses, and there were 62 building permits that were necessary to be issued. As it relates to code enforcement, there were 23 overgrown vegetation cases. There were 23 signs removed from the right of way. That continues to be a problem that, and we're going to ask all of our citizens to be conscious of the fact that signs cannot be placed in the right of way, because we do have the right to remove them if they are in the right of way. Three trash can violations, 11 inoperative vehicles. Actually had to do one business license check to make sure that it was being operated, being properly licensed. Nine bulk waste calls, three cases of property maintenance, and actually, Mr. Palmer, that's actually, that number should be five, is that right? Since you have, we've now moved dilapidated buildings into that same category, because I believe that three was prior to that adjustment, is that right? Okay, so that would be, that would be five cases as it relates to property maintenance, and that includes dilapidated properties. There were zero construction permit checks. Two civil matters had to be handled. Eight parking violations, and I think a lot of citizens are not aware of the code requirements as it relates to parking in the city, so I would ask all of you to, as citizens, and maybe mention to your neighbors that we do have certain parking restrictions. You can find that in the code if you go online, or if you contact the planning and development department, they can certainly be able to give you some guidance on that issue. We had no obstructions of the right of way, Mr. Mayor, and no animal nuisances. That's what we have. Later, when we ask the directors to do the reports, I'm going to ask that Mr. Palmer, our planning and development director, gives a little bit of an update on what's happening with the depot.
Okay. Okay, general services, you can find that information, that data, on the activity reports that we post weekly, and also if the director gives a report this afternoon, you'll hear that. I would like to say while I have everyone here, to thank the director, David Carlin, and his folks for the outstanding work for our summer jam, the fireworks show and the barbecue. Those items continue to grow every year. The flow of the traffic was so much better this year, particularly as the barbecues, speaking on that. I think the count was 3,400 plates that we served, so kudos to all of you in that department, and those that helped as well. Thank you very much. Item E, administration, that will be provided by the city administrator. At this time, I'll ask for a motion for the financial statement on item six.
Mayor Jones, I make a motion that we accept the financial statement as presented by the finance director, Bradley Smith.
Mr. Mayor, I will second that motion that we accept the financial statement.
Any discussion? Hearing none, cast your votes at this time. Motion carries. Item seven, employee of the month, city administrator, Elaine Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would like for Philip Knight to come forward, and for his department head, Keith Lyons, and any other employees that are coming to support Philip, if you'll come forward. Philip, you have been nominated and approved for employee of the month for June of 2025. This award is given to you to thank you for your outstanding service to the citizens of Grove Town, Georgia, signed, sealed, and delivered today, and we thank you for all your hard work. There's a nice gift card attached, and so if you'll hold this in the middle, we'll get a picture with you. On behalf of the mayor, council, and the city, we appreciate all the hard work you do.
Okay, item eight, service awards. Again, city administrator, Elaine Matthews.
If I could ask Deb McNair to come forward. You all saw her get her picture made a minute ago, because her department head had another engagement, but Deb, if you'll come forward, we're going to heap some praises on you. I just want to say, I've known Deb for a long time, and being able to work with her here at the city of Grove Town has been a great pleasure for me. She is always totally cooperative. There's not a task that you ask her to do that she's not willing to openly and freely do it, and I commend her for that, because knowledge is one thing, but attitude is something different, and when you do the attitude with the job that she has, with her great attitude, it goes a long way, so I'm very appreciative of her. She has 15 years in the city of Grove Town. And Deb, this is a certificate of appreciation awarded to you. You're hereby recognized by the mayor and council members of the city of Grove Town for your faithful service to the citizens of our city for the past 15 years. This certificate and pen are tokens of our appreciation for your dedication in making our city the best it can be. We can never thank you enough for your loyalty, and hope to have you as a valued team member for many more years to come. And there's your 15-year pin. Congratulations. And Bradley, congratulations as well. He had another engagement, so he had to leave, but I know he appreciates you and all your hard work. Thank you. David Carlin, if you'll come forward. Also known David for many, many years, worked with David at a prior location for the state of Georgia. We were employed at Augusta YDC along with the mayor for a while, and so we had 90 days of bliss with Mayor Jones there, and after Mayor Jones fulfilled his appointment by the governor, we were kind of left behind. And so when I heard there was an opening for Grove Town, I applied, and when I applied and got the job, David called me and said, "Do you have a place for me?"
Yeah, we're all three here now.
Yeah, we're all three here now together, so that could be trouble, but anyway. David, you're here to receive a certificate of appreciation awarded to you for 10 years of service. I don't know where the time has gone, it's unbelievable. With David's department, come up here with him. I know a lot of y'all are here to support him. You're hereby recognized by the mayor and council members of the city of Grove Town for your faithful service to the citizens of our city for the past 10 years. This certificate and pen are tokens of our appreciation for your dedication to making our city the best it can be. We can never thank you enough for your loyalty, and hope to have you as a valued team member for many more years to come. Signed, sealed, delivered today, 14th of July, 2025. 10 years, I don't know where the time went, but it's been great. And as the mayor mentioned, the events get bigger and better every year, and I don't know, you and your staff just pull it off each time, and you make it look easy, and I know it's not, but thank you for your dedication to the city. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, item nine, Vietnam Veterans Recognition, Councilmember Richard Bowman.
Specialist Charles William Collins, would you join me, please?
Don't forget to grab the mic, Richard.
I'm sorry?
Don't forget to grab the mic.
I will. Thank you, sir. I'm going to come to you. First of all, on behalf of this mayor and the limited city council today, we want to thank you, soldier, for your service and welcome you home the way you should have been welcomed home. Specialist Collins is an American hero. Born April 25, 1945, Specialist Collins was very involved as a young man prior to his service. He was editor of his school newspaper, played the tuba in the band, acted in plays, participated in the Drum and Bugle Corps, and was also a DJ. Upon graduating in 1963, he enlisted in the U.S. Army and received basic training at Fort Dix in New Jersey, later becoming a member of the Signal Corps at Fort Gordon. In nearby Augusta, he met his wife at a USO dance on Broad Street where he was acting as the DJ. Probably a pretty cool guy at that time, right? She asked him to dance. Boy, you were smooth. And they were married shortly thereafter in March of 1964. Immediately following his birthday, just one month later, Specialist Collins was sent to Vietnam. He had several responsibilities overseas, including guard duty, working in the shop, and developing film for fellow soldiers in the photo lab. He then learned to operate amateur radio equipment, going on to set up 28 sites around Vietnam to call in air support for American troops. And I don't know if we, David, if we have, we have a map that should appear on your screen that will show all the sites throughout Vietnam that he is responsible for. His unit, the 39th Signal Battalion, received a Presidential Unit Citation for maintaining constant communication between May of 1964 and May of 1965. Shortly after, he returned to Fort Gordon and became an instructor. He was then sent to Alaska where he served three years inspecting equipment for calibration. After returning to Fort Gordon once more, he was honorably discharged in August of 1971. As a result of his stellar service to our country, Specialist Collins received the National Defense Service Medal, two Good Conduct Medals, an Expert Rifle Badge, and the aforementioned Meritorious Unit Citation. He also received several certifications throughout his duration in service. Following his military career, Specialist Collins has worked in several jobs and has also started a veterans recycling service to assist veterans in our area. He participates in Tunnel to Towers events in addition to working with wounded warriors. Sir, as I said earlier, the City of Grove Town wants to thank you for your service.
I appreciate it.
Would you like to say something, sir?
I would. I really appreciate Grove Town. I lived here when I was at Fort Gordon. And first you don't know that, but I lived here when I got out of the service for a while. And then I come back to Grove Town because I love Grove Town. Such wonderful people out here, and I mean it from the bottom of my heart. I love Grove Town. And I love serving, and I love helping other people. Always have and always will. Long as I'm able to breathe and long as I'm able to work and long as I'm able to do, I'll do for my veterans because I appreciate them. I appreciate all they did. Appreciate, you know, the service that they served. And I enjoy helping them. I recycle because, you know, and I just got moved over here to Grove Town on Newman Town Road. I was living in 807 Sycamore Court. But I moved over to Newman Town Road because I bought a house over there. And we got a nice building in the back. And I was unloading the last load of equipment from the house on Sycamore. I was loading the last load into the building. And I thought I put the truck in park, and it was in reverse. And when I turned the key off and come around the back of the truck, it started rolling. And I grabbed the door and grabbed the handle, the steering wheel, and tried to stop it. It went through the fence, across the road. I dropped off. The truck ran over my groin, crushed my pelvic area, and I was in the hospital for four months. Come through all that. I want to get back to serving again. I can't get in my building because I got cement blocks. They had to get up in the building, so I can't get in it. But I'm going to, I'm going to try to get somebody to come by and make me a ramp there. I got a ramp to come in the house, but I need a ramp to go in the building. I got a lot of stuff in there, a lot of work I want to do, and I want to keep doing it. So if you know anybody that could help me, I'd appreciate it very much. But other than that, I love this country from the bottom of my heart. And I appreciate the service that I did and I appreciate the service that others do. And God knows that I love y'all. So, I appreciate it. This is my caregiver. She can share me and my wife. My wife has a rock pit.
That's all right. This is his time. This is his time.
David, I know it's outside of our realm, but how about getting with this gentleman and let's find out what he needs at his house for his shop. Item 10, Our Business Spotlight, City Administrator Elaine Matthews.
That's an impossible act to follow. Thank you, Specialist Collins. If Debbie would come forward from KJ's. I go in KJ's and I see Debbie in there all the time, just working her heart out. So we wanted to do this Business Spotlight Award. It's a certificate of recognition presented to KJ's Market to thank you for contributing to the business community and to our city. And we thank you for your hard work. We appreciate all the good meat load products that y'all bring in. Weekful last, you had the meat load sale, truck load sale. And I couldn't even get in the parking lot. It was so full. So that's great. But thank you. And this is being given, you can display it there in the business. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, this next item, before I call the gentleman up, I want to say a few words. He was recognized by the state of Georgia at their annual MAD awards as the top officer in the state for DUIs. As a result of that, me and council were going to present him with a, just a certificate of recognition and a gift certificate. I think that's an outstanding award and recognition for getting so many DUIs, particularly in this city here. And I salute his professionalism and his hard work. And it says that the certificate of recognition presented to Juan Gomez for winning the Golden Achievement Award at the 21st Annual MAD Golden Shield Award Ceremony. The Golden Achievement Award is given to a citizen, officer, agency, group, or organization with outstanding expertise in the field of traffic safety, DUI prevention, and/or community intervention who has made a significant contribution to MAD's mission and Georgia traffic safety. The citizen of Grove Town thanks Officer Gomez for his dedication to the safety of our citizens. And it's indicated by me, the Mayor pro tem, council members, and also attested by the city clerk. So if you'll come down, Juan Gomez, I'll present this to you. Officer Gomez says, make sure you have a designated driver. Okay, item 12, we've already covered. We have one citizen comment, and I'm going to see if I can pronounce your last name correctly. Is that right?
Thank you.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, fellow citizens. Good evening. My name is Dr. Claude Baguina, current ER physician at Augusta University. And I'd like to share with you a new business which we started in Grove Town. We actually met with the planning committee two months ago, and the business was just approved. It's a mobile, it's a mobile medical clinic. So I work in the ER, and one of the things I see a lot is, one of the biggest complaints I get from my patients in Augusta Grove Town is lack of access. And we have a huge elderly population in Grove Town, especially most times with limited access to healthcare. So as a physician, I figured, what is one way we can help out the Grove Town community? So the business is called Your Home MD. I think the best way to describe it is it's like a mobile urgent care where we come to you instead of you going to a clinic. So it's mainly based for those with limited mobility. Like we just saw Specialist Collins. And if you ever needed healthcare at home, definitely call us and I'll definitely remember to help you out, okay? So Your Home MD, it's meant for those with limited mobility, those with busy schedules. We see a lot of moms with multiple kids can't come to the hospital. We can come to your home. And some of our services include things like triage. If you just wanted to call to talk to a physician, like, should I go to the hospital? Like, what should I, what can I do? You can call, talk to a physician. And then we also offer services like testing for things like flu, COVID, pretty much anything you go to an urgent care for, we can do it for you except it's at your home. And then we also offer services to businesses as well. Like say, I know something like KJ's Market. If an employee gets hurt and you don't want to go to the ER and spend a $2,000 bill for something simple, we can come to your business place and also take care of you. And most times we can do same-day visits or like next-day visits as well. So the name of the business is Your Home MD. Next time I come to the meeting, I'll try to have some, something we can put up on the screen. But I'll have some business cards at the end of the meeting to share with everyone as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move to item 15, New Business. Entertain a motion for 15A, recommend adoption of Ordinance 2024-05-01B to adopt 2024 through 2025 amended annual balanced budget. First reading.
Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion for the adoption of Ordinance 2024-05-01B to adopt the 2024-25 amended annual balanced budget.
First reading.
I'll second that motion.
Hey, any discussion? Hearing none, cast your votes at this time. Motion carries. 15B, recommend adoption of 2025 millage rate, 6.948 mils.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adopt the millage rate for 2025, 6.948 mils.
Mr. Mayor, I will second gladly and happily second that motion to reduce the millage rate.
All right, any discussion? Hearing none, cast your votes at this time. Motion carries. Move to Director's Reports, item 16, City Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do want to again thank all of our employees who participated in the fireworks and the barbecue, and also the volunteers. We had a lot of volunteers that came out and passed out some information and helped with the meal. So we thank them as well. If they're looking tonight on Facebook, we do thank you. The road paving Bradley covered earlier. We were glad to get a call today that they could start early. So as you all go home, watch out for them. They'll be starting around 10 o'clock. Congressman Allen, Rick Allen's office, will be here on August the 27th from 9:30 a.m. till 11 a.m. to hear any concerns that citizens may have regarding services that they may need where he can assist your office. That's August the 27th, 9:30 a.m. to 11 a.m. here at City Hall. Also, I want to remind you that school starts back on August the 4th. So these things are happening before your next meeting. That's why I'm addressing them now. And we will have a back-to-school bash on August the 1st, 6 p.m. to 9 p.m. at Liberty Park. So if you would like to donate, you can contact our Recreation Department or the Police Department, and they can receive donations. Or if your children are in need of supplies, come to Liberty Park, 6 p.m. to 9 p.m. on August the 1st while supplies last, okay? Appreciation to Mayor and Council for the 3% COLA. We thank you all for keeping us at the industry standard. And we've had a lot of thank yous that have come into my office that I'm going to pass on to you all tonight. Much appreciation for that. Let's see, what else I have here? We have a director's meeting on Wednesday at 11 o'clock, and I would invite either one of you councilmen to come. No more than three of you to avoid any kind of voting irregularities. But if you would like to come, we'll be meeting here in the council chambers at 11 o'clock.
No more than two of us.
Yes, excuse me, no more than two. Yeah, not three. Don't want any business transacted.
You're trying to get us in trouble.
Yes, okay. So, and lunch will be served. Trunk or Treat will be held at Liberty Park. We have a delay in the start of the contract for improvements there. That has been moved to November 1st. So the Trunk or Treat, October 24th, will be held at Liberty Park, as usual. And we do, we have secured the ATV parking team to handle parking for that because that usually is a pretty busy activity. On August the 8th, which is prior to your next meeting, we will have an Employee Appreciation Day at Liberty Park. It will begin at 11:30 and last until 2 p.m. I would ask you all to come and to think of some kind of fun award that you would like to make to some of our employees and participate in that event. We will have hamburgers and hot dogs on the menu, and I would love to have y'all's presence there. And I think that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. While it's on my mind, Officer Gomez, you know that on the back of that certificate's a gift card. I just want to make sure you are aware. And also, to our recognized veteran, Mr. Charles Collins, I don't know if you heard or not, but one of the city, some of the city folks will be contacting you to take a look at trying to help you with that utility shed or so forth. You're very welcome. City clerk, did you have something?
This is just a reminder to the citizens that we will be holding qualifying for two council seats, August 18th through the 20th, during business hours from 9 to 4:30. If you want an application, you can come by my office during normal business hours. That's it.
Hold me one out. Human Resources. Finance is not here. General Services? Okay. Utility Services. Planning and Development.
Mr. Mayor and Council, Councilman Bowman kind of put me on the spot to give you an update on the depot. So I'm going to start from the ground up. All right. After an auspicious start with the groundwater issues, we're finally, you know, vertical, you've driven by there, you've seen the roof, the shingles on the roof, you've seen the windows go in. That is an excellent sign. We are on track. Electricians are in there pulling wires for all the receptacles and other electrical power needs. Plumbers have almost finished all of their interior plumbing. Now we've got the site contractor out there getting ready to put in the parking lot and the other associated storm drains. The underground detention has been put in. We're getting close. Now, when we get in there and start hanging drywall and all that, that's when the rubber meets the road. We get everything looking good. And we did have a little bit of a hiccup with some of the structural iron, and that set us back about a week. Right now, we're anticipating a soft opening on around November the 11th. But things aren't set in stone yet, so we may have some other delays. We don't anticipate them, but I just, we're trying, we're shooting for November the 11th, but it may be delayed. I just don't want to get your hopes up and say, Jack, you said November the 11th.
Well, it looks great.
Yeah, it does. Clifton, Clifton has been an outstanding contractor, one of the best contractors I've worked with in my 40 years of doing construction.
Good.
That's my update for the depot. Any questions?
Well, Jack, to take you off the spot, so in terms of giving us a date, we understand it's construction.
Right.
So to give an exact date is pretty much impossible.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything from the Police Department?
I'd like to welcome Officer Michael Transu. He came from Harlem. He started his first day today, so we are looking forward to good things from him. And also to make a shameless plug for our National Night Out Back to School Bash on the 1st of August from 6 p.m. to 9 p.m. If anyone wish to donate any school supplies, because that's the reason for it, book bags and stuff like that, they could come and see myself, and so we can give it out to these kids and them that they need it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Fire Rescue? We do not have our Public Information Officer tonight. So that concludes my report. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
I will second that motion.
We are adjourned. Thank you for coming.